At least I think that is the best I can do. What is this thing there? Satan.
It's an old, old room. All right, how you doing?
Where in that door? Hey, Ms. Carolyn, how are you? Hey, Ms. Carolyn.
Hi.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Julie. I didn't remember that, that's my daughter's name.
It's all right.
There you go.
This is law enforcement, he live in fashion.
I know.
I did too.
And I'm gonna come with your truck.
And I ain't going to Red River and crushing no road.
That's what he's concerned about.
That's all I care about.
That's it.
That's it.
I ain't making no heavy loads up there.
Hello. Hello. Hello, hello, how are you?
Good. Well, I was good till I saw that pile of people.
Uh-huh, remember you asked me some questions yesterday? I, I did a little research when I was bored. Um, constitutional revenue, which talks about, uh, that revenue sharing. And some stuff on severance. And the road rule, I was right on that. The road royalty is for mineral. So that's all that was.
That's all that was?
Thanks, Carolyn.
Hey, what's going on? You doing all right, Carol?
I'm good.
You don't know where it's going?
It's pregnant up here.
Me?
How are you, sir?
I'm good, I'm good. I'm wanting to thank you.
Uh-oh.
I, I was asking about. Did you get your destroyed? You've mentioned something, I don't know what you're talking about. I says, could you give me pictures of them something? When you set up? Demonstrations, and I haven't been able to make it to one yet.
Do you remember if tomorrow they made?
Yeah.
Remember tomorrow he told me we don't make, then he backed out.
Then he backed out. Well, well, that last one. I just saw it and I said, oh, okay. But then when I looked at the location, it was in Manny, I guess, to be parish and then more.
They, they bought one. That was their third one. But, um, you know, uh, well, I didn't, um, the guy that was setting it up, he didn't get back with me till right at the end. Karen made it.
Yeah, he, he stood there. But then when I looked up where it was, I said, I can't get there.
Hey, Ms. Karen.
Well, it lasted for a couple hours.
Yeah.
You good?
Yeah, it lasted for a while.
Because I just saw that enough.
We ain't lying and hurt.
That's an expensive one.
Get things on that.
No, no. My bad, I was being third party. Hey. Karen's got two.
Wow. I don't know.
It was good. And this is not a, not a type of add-on. But then I also wish I was rolling with it too, you know? And we just got something out of those trucks. They take them roses. The guy right there was in the truck.
Yes, you're not, never been to Michigan.
Oh, what's this?
I'm done.
That's yours. No, no, so where'd that come from?
Me?
Oh, you hit it, you scared, you scared.
I thought that was.
I thought it would be a present to you.
How you doing? I did that, I put that over there.
Okay, okay.
That, that's the competitive plan.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what, you gotta have it.
All right. No, uh-uh. I thought I was trying to tell you. Get it upside down.
I, I didn't understand.
I'm all for that. Yeah, Mr. Will.
How are you? How are you?
You came with the chair? Cheryl? Huh? What's wrong? Don't see nobody. So I guess what I'm saying is, if we wanna, go ahead with, uh, these gentlemen in room. We'll catch up with these when we get there.
Let's get started. Um, Chief Wood and, uh, Mr. Holmes, do the play, please.
Lord, we thank you, everyone, for coming for you, Lord, we just ask for your name, as a guide, as Father God, to teach us, teach us, Father God, on the right way, the right direction, Father, to come together, to working together, Father God, for the benefit of all these parish, and the people in this parish today, we thank you for it, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right, we all got it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, coming out for the work session. Um, since, uh, the people from Triad is not on yet, we gonna, uh, skip over to the first introduction, so we can, um, get the ones from Red River Parish, uh, can they have somewhere they need to go? So we'll skip to, um, first introduction, the proposed ordinance, A, council to introduce ordinance twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, commercial vehicle enforcement, of commercial vehicles operating in the parish of Nagus, along with the creation of a commercial vehicle enforcement unit, CVEU, that should enforce applicable ordinances adopted by the Nagus Parish on all roadways maintained by Nagus Parish. It shall be vested with the authority to direct, control, and recollect all traffic in the parish of Nagus. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Um, here.
Yes, thank you, I'm handing out a briefing I'll give. And the procedure I hope to do is give you a little quick briefing, and then let our gentlemen from Red River Parish speak to you. And then after they're through, then we can answer questions, both of us together, if they're willing to that format. I hope I have enough at least for this front here. Oh, council. I don't say anything like you correct. Anybody else? All right, so that's it. Okay, following along with me, I show the purpose on this first slide is provide information on the Nagus Parish Council on proposed ordinance for rules for commercial vehicles, along with a parish commercial vehicle enforcement unit. So everyone here is concerned about the quality of the roads, both maintaining the good roads and improving the bad roads. So I'm gonna go into detail, this is the purpose, next slide. Here's the things I'm gonna talk about quickly, give an overview of the actual proposed ordinance. The actual text has been, draft text has been given to the attorney, the parish attorney, and he's looking at it, and it will be provided separately. And I will also discuss the need for the ordinance, and the nearby parishes that are already doing, doing it, I chose three of them to look at. And I'll talk about some of the action steps that must occur, and which, which will fall into the area responsibility of the parish president, some of it, I'll just mention. And finally, we're fortunate enough to have two people from Red River Parish, gonna talk after I talk, Mr. Jesse Davis, administrator and juror for the parish, and we have Harold Woodard, who's the commander of the enforcement unit. Next slide. So this is a summary of the actual proposed ordinance, I don't have to read that, but let me mention to you, there's actually two, two things in this. Part one is the rules for commercial vehicles, part two is the enforcement unit. What we're proposing is a post-certified, you know, peace officer standards and training certified person to actually implement, be the enforcement officer, led under the supervision of the parish president, control of the parish president. Uh, so these are some of the items in the post-ordinance, the authority of Nagus Parish, the operator requirements, uh, vehicle safety requirements, height, width, length, limits of a vehicle, how far a load can project out from a vehicle, restrictions on the dimensions of oversized vehicles, securing a cargo, permitting, routing, penalties, permits for oversized vehicles and loads, prohibited travel days, uh, adheres to state laws, specifically licensed, and any state exemptions for farm and agriculture vehicles, impounding of vehicles for repeat violators, and rules for movement of mobile homes, and procedures for escorts. Next slide, should be slide four. Everybody knows here, right, roads are vital for long-term economic growth, there's no path forward for great economic growth without improvement of the roads and our infrastructure. And we all know that there's many so, uh, costs associated with bad roads, not only is it, uh, diminished economic growth, but there's also, it translates to higher car repair, maintenance costs, and of course, safety is our biggest concern here in this enforcement area, and it's a problem with commercial vehicles, and especially for oversized and overweight vehicles. And we know that some commercial vehicles are damaging our roads, especially in the outer areas on the edges of the parish, that we can't really see, because we go later, we find out some damage has been done, this will help ameliorate some of that. Uh, and I don't have to remind people that we have limited road maintenance funds, so some of the permitting fees, well, the permitting fees and fines can contribute to revenue to the maintenance improvement of the roads. And the plan is to have all that money dedicated to both the enforcement unit and maintenance of roads. Uh, we have a commercial, uh, vehicle permitting system that was enacted last year, but because of problems, uh, lack of personnel being on them, it's not being fully enforced right now. Next slide, slide five. Going on with the need for commercial vehicles, in nineteen seventy-nine, I know it's an old study, but they, they state that twenty-two percent of all loaded tractor trailers exceeded state weight, weight limits, and the percentage range is high as eighty-one percent for other types of trucks. A five-axle trailer tractor loaded to the eighty-thousand-pound federal limit has the same impact on an interstate highway as ninety-six hundred automobiles. A truck axle carrying eighteen thousand pounds is only nine times heavier than a two-thousand-pound automobile axle, but does five thousand times more damage. A two thousand sixteen U T study found that heavier trucks with six axle, both ninety-one thousand pound and ninety-seven thou, seven thousand pound configurations, had higher crash rates. So we're seeing more severe crashes, more likely to roll over, because these heavier trucks have a higher center of gravity and more risk associated. And of course, there's additional wear and tear on the key safety components of the trucks. Uh, six, two thousand sixteen study found that trucks weighing over eighty thousand pounds had higher overall out-of-service rates and eighteen percent higher brake violation rates compared to those at below eighty thousand pounds. And twenty sixteen study by the Insurance Institute of Highway Safety found that trucks without any, with any out-of-service violation are three hundred sixty-two percent more likely to be involved in a crash. There's, there's the need right there. And one more slide on the need. Our parish cannot, and we're on six now, our parish cannot rely on the state to carry out the full extent of enforcement, they have limited resources, and DPS, weights and standards principally operate on U.S. highways. Now, the sheriff's office cannot support our need for commercial enforcement, and again, it's because of limited resources, particularly deputies are focused on other priorities, crime prevention and response. Consequently, they have little incentive to enforce these laws, also, they don't have the training. Techniques employed in enforcement can range from routine patrolling, taking photos before and after, filming before and after, conducting roadside inspection, weighing activities, and engaging in saturation efforts by off, officers. C V, C V officers generally pull people over and check them out, uh, they don't even need probable cause, they're authorized anywhere in the parish. We can learn from best practices from our gentlemen from Red, uh, not Red Beach, but, uh, Red River Parish, Caddo, Bossier, what have you. We also need to be aware that gas drilling and oil drilling perhaps, uh, will probably extend southward sometime in the future, we have some wells in the north of the parish. And when this occurs, we'll start receiving more truck activity like Red River Parish, and we need to be set to, to handle that influx of vehicles. And there's other gap, oil plays that even reach in Nagus Parish, we could even see them exploited one day. Next slide, slide seven. Now, this is just, uh, an anecdote experience, uh, this was Bossier Parish, and this was taken off the internet from, uh, K T A L News in Bossier. And interesting, the commanding officer of the CVEU, uh, said the company knew it was breaking the law, but did it anyway that the eighteen thousand dollar fine was chicken feed compared to what it would have cost to adhere to the law. It would have cost them fifty thousand dollars to actually separate the load, so they were intentionally breaking the laws. So, next slide. So just, I just chose three parishes, there's three other parishes that are doing this, Caddo, Bossier, and Red River, also, of course, we have the Louisiana Ways and Standards under DPS. Next slide, here's a picture of Caddo and Bossier Parish's C V U, C V EUs. Next slide, ten, and here's Red River Parish standing next to Commander Wood, Woodard, standing next to one of their vehicles, enforcement, his vehicles. Mr. Wayne Hom and I actually, uh, had the pleasure of meeting the gentleman, and we go to, uh, to shout it to Red River Parish, and we met with him, and they gave us a full rundown of what they were doing, and he's gonna read just a second. So, turning to slide seven, some of the proposal actions and steps, uh, we're going to need to adopt the ordinance for commercial vehicles to include size and weight, and height, and all the limits and permits and all this, so it fees and fines. The same ordinance can create a commercial vehicle enforcement unit, where the president, in conjunction with the sheriff, could hire, train, and equip field personnel, and acquire a patrol vehicle, acquire the necessary lights, sirens, what have you, cam, uh, cameras, additional equipment like scales, uh, handheld radios, and of course, software to administer the whole program, permitting, routing, and what have you. So that, so, uh, next slide, oh yeah, next slide, so this final slide is twelve. So, so far, the coordination that has been done on this proposed ordinance. I've spoken, obviously, with Mr. Wayne Hom, Red River Parish officials, Sheriff Wright, uh, Stephen Mansour, John Salter, President, and Julie Lockhart, Treasurer. And, uh, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Mr. Davis, Mr. Woodard, and you'll go ahead and speak, is that fine? Okay, if you would, come on.
Good afternoon, all, I'm Jesse Davis, and this is Harold Wood, uh, one of the officers that we have, we actually have two now, because, uh, it was quite overwhelming, uh, just for one, because Red River only have like three hundred and fifty miles of, of, uh, road, and the law without any, any type of enforcement, you're just, just barking up the wrong tree. And, uh, so we have to have some form of enforcement out there. And we went to, we only had one for some time, we hired another one this year. Even though it's a down scale of the oil and gas in Red River, we still hired the, the extra, uh, level of protection, because we were having all sorts of other problems on parish roads as well. It, it, it just wasn't at all folks as, as per se, it was other loaded vehicles, you know, like some people even want to take loaded vehicles home, and all that kind of good stuff, they want to take them down residential neighborhoods, uh, trucks, they feel like they can do what they can do anytime they want to do it, and that's just the way it is, and, and once you get on local roads, you'll find that the sheriff department and the, and the Ways and Standards, they usually just don't, uh, it's gotta be something major for them to go out on, on parish roads. So, the parish actually have to take care of, you know, the indivision constituents of, of, of each of their areas. And that was our main deal, because we, we know that sheriff department, you know, they was concerned about all the other crimes. And for logs getting over, dropping in the road, and all that kind of good stuff, uh, they usually, you know, don't. And, and, and you'll find when these vehicles are loaded like that, just the impact of those vehicles, it's just like the train when it's passing by on the track, you can still, the, the roadway, it just breaks apart, and then on top of that, if you don't have the actual infrastructure down there, you know, with soil cement and all that kind of stuff, well, it, it's just not gonna hold up. And then on one well, and we know, because in Nagus, Nagus actually have some wells right next door to us, because they have to come to us to get to, to service some wells, so we do know that it is, because, uh, Mr. Woodard, we've had some issues, you know, on that, on that particular deal too, but you'll, you'll find that you actually have to enforce that deal, and we, we did this one in twenty-twenty. It's when we all started our C V U, uh, unit, because the roads superintendent was actually doing it prior to that, and then new labor was done by hand, and all that kind of stuff. But now, we've actually had a program built, it was built by Jamie Bobbitt, and the same one that built Caddo and Bossier. And actually, anybody can do it on their, on their iPads, on their phones, uh, so it actually, the personnel deal, uh, on access issue, the permits, get an issue of permits itself, you know, once they go through it and, and go through, uh, and pay and all that, they get the permit online. Uh, so that took away a lot of the actual personnel, I mean, that, that was needed for that paperwork part, and it actually do the reports that you need, you know, each month, and, and, and that put him back, because we wanted him in the field, we don't, we didn't need him in the office, so that's what we kinda did, it was like ten thousand dollars for that program that we had built, uh, uh, and, and Jamie Bobbitt did it, and it, it actually, you can look at it, it's on, on our website, you can go through it, and Caddos and Bossers or something similar, because I think the same guy built all their programs as well, uh, the computer program that I'm talking about, and then get started. Bossier Parish donated, uh, two of their, uh, units, so with other forms of income that you, I mean, the, uh, funding that can be generated, uh, say like your sheriff's department can, the unit or something like that, Bossier donated us vehicles, two of them. Uh, you'll find that other areas will help, you know, some of the areas, uh, to, to get started, because it's actually a good program. So they donated us two, we actually bought a, a new one since then, and basically, I, I passed out a little fly, a fly like deal, and you'll see the scales were pretty high, I think that was like thirty grand back in twenty. Uh, on the scales, you'll find that particular deal, and then you'll find that when, where some of the other, uh, folks, they donated us stuff just to get started, because they realized that we needed some too, because people were calling, uh, I serve as a juror and a manager, and, and they wear my phone out, and, and they, they rake me over at church, and, and getting those type of places, and y'all know what I'm talking about. Anywhere you go, restaurant, they, they, they say, I know you eating, but, you know, and, and, and then they just pull up a chair. So you're gonna find that, that's basically, you know, that's the way it works, with those scales, they, they real, real high, uh, high. And we hired, uh, Mr. Woodard back in twenty-twenty, we did a corporate endeavor agreement with Bossier Parish, uh, and you can find other forms of monies out there too, that, you know, for like the radios and all that type of stuff, you can actually, uh, it's other channels of money that you can actually use. But just in Red River alone, with just three hundred, three hundred miles of road, we probably, since twenty, since we, we started the program, you look, we generated something like a million and a half. Uh, and that's only in the four, that's only in the four years, and then on top of that, he's not even stringent. And, and what I mean is, he just don't, all that, you actually have to pick the officer, and he's post-certified with sheriff's department, and if you actually pick the right one, you know, some, some similar to like the mom and pops, you can, you can get by, you know, well, you know, uh, if they're not a horse behind, you know what I'm trying to say, but you can, you can, you can kind of do that, you actually pick the right person. And then the, the second one, we actually, you know, done the same thing, so they're not actually real, real stringent, if you're real, real stringent, your, your dollar figures will go way up, because it's, it's all kind of stuff that they be doing, uh, that you'll find out, and moving, and, and most of the time, they do it at night. Uh, weekends, holidays, and stuff like that, you know, whereas at least you're not even paying attention to it. So, that's just some of the deals that we had, you know, that's going on with, uh, with us, and, and our sheriff's department was real good about it, uh, you know, as well, because he actually post-certify them, and if he need them, you know, they can do everything, he can do anything that the, the regular deputy do too, but his job is strictly on the road, if, if the sheriff need assistance on something else, he's got the post-certification and certified by that sheriff that he can cut, he can go and, and do it, the traffic, whatever he need to do, uh, you know, if the sheriff gets short, or whatever. Uh, that was the duty part of it, and then on top of that, if we need something, uh, we can go to the sheriff, and, 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 and if he need backup, he'll send, you know, uh, it's no issue, it's an open line of communication with, uh, uh, just Woodard and Mr. Edwards, and, uh, so that makes it, that makes it good all the way around, uh, but I do, I, I, I just wanted to give y'all those little deals, because it, to get started, probably, somewhere in the neighborhood, a hundred fifty thousand or so, to get started, but we cut some of that down, because Bossier donated us, let's keep that in mind, Bossier donated to Tahoe, uh, to Red River. You know, to actually get started, uh, so that just, and then some of the grant program, you can buy and update your equipment and stuff like that, um, as well. So, it's been a win-win for Red River, and now, the sheriff department actually, when something is going on, or anything about that road, he usually don't send his, he'll usually call the road deputy, because they can have more expertise on, on, you know, with them trucks than the regular deputy. You're gonna find that, and, and, and he hand, and, and the sheriff actually is, is a big deal in the deal, because he actually trusts those particular officers, and he'll, if it's one that he don't like, we normally, we usually know that right up front, and he won't certify, post-certify, so it's gotta be one that he trusts, you know, that's gonna, because it's gonna be a reflection on the sheriff's department as well, so he actually, uh, trusts the one that we, we have, and, and he have a big input on it, and, and then that way, we don't have no issues. And then if he already know, if he call, he's just calling on the radio, on cellphone, and telling them what's going on, and, uh, you know, and expect them to, you know, to do it, because, uh, Mr. Woodard gonna have the wisdom, you know, uh, on stopping those trucks and stuff like that, because stopping trucks is a whole lot different deal than stopping, uh, the automobile.
You can't stop a truck in the same place you stop a car, you gotta be, gotta make sure you got some good shoulders, you don't want that truck to pull over and turnover. Uh, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's a little bit involved. I will tell you that when we had our meeting, when they first hired me back in twenty, uh, the sheriff and the chief deputy was there, and several other people was there, and I looked at the sheriff, and I said, sheriff, I need you to commission me. Uh, I said, I know you don't know who I am, and it's hard for you to put your signature on a commission card for me, because you don't have any idea who I am. I said, but let me give you a number you can call, and that's Sheriff Prater in Caddo, I retired from Caddo Sheriff's Office. I said, I've known Sheriff Prater for the whole time that he's been there, I said, he can, he can tell you who I am, in fact, I said, in fact, my wife still works for the sheriff's office. In fact, I said, in fact, my wife still works for the sheriff's office. So they know, he knows the Woodards quite well. And so it worked out. The sheriff commissioned me and I told him, I said, I'm not gonna jump your deputies' calls. I will be there if they need help. And along the same lines, if I get out there and I get my butt in the crack, I want to know that you guys are coming as well. And that's the reason that we did that. It's a two-way street. And my expertise is trucks, even though I don't know all I need to know about them. But a lot of the deputies will stop me when I'm sitting on the side of the road and ask me about, ask me questions about trucks. And I told them all, I said, if you have, if you need me, you call me. We'll take care of whatever issues that you have.
And don't think that you're actually catch them all. And it's not just one industry that Red River was actually having problems with. We've had problems with other trucking industries as well. It's actually, once you get the enforcement piece in there, well, then you can actually talk with, we even talk with the timber folks. We talk with the oil folks. We talk with the farm folks. We talk with all of them and let them know what we actually expect and what we're doing, what we won't do. And, you know, and that's a big key, you know, on it. Because the timber folks, well, they were saying, no, no, no. But then again, they find out it wasn't so, it wasn't so bad. But then again, it's some bad operators don't make no difference. It's some bad timber operators, it's some bad farm operators, it's a bad oil. I mean, it's just, some folk just don't believe in doing nothing what the law says. And that's just bottom line. So we had to do something because actually when all the people in Red River start complaining about it, our complaint level, even on the police tier, it actually went way, way down. And we have some pretty decent roads now as well. So it, and the problems are not nearly the same. They don't even bother me at church as much as they used to, you know, on road issues. So, and even if they have a problem with Mr. Woodard or whatever, they call and they'll report that if he said something, you know, they may say. So we dealt with all those particular issues. And it's actually been pretty good. You know it's pretty good if we actually hired another deputy. When did we hire Sam?
It's been a right of a year.
No, it's been that long?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, and you know, right now, the oil industry is on a downturn. But we still have other issues that citations and stuff are being issued. I mean, if you look at that sheet I gave you, you'll see what our citation, and he's not a real go-getter at the citation department. You know, I will, meaning he just don't, a lot of times he stop trucks and they don't want him giving a ticket. And he let him, you know, and he, you know, you know how, you know how some of our other officers, if it's no big deal, he just tell them, okay, turn it down, whatever, whatever, and, you know, and go on. And that comes on, you know, with the type of personnel that you get.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this program self-sufficient? How is it funded? Is it funded through your highway or road maintenance budget?
No. It was at first, the jury funded to start up with. But since the inception of our program, it's been self-sufficient. Right now, we collect between 300 and 400,000 a year just as on fines and permits. And like I say, if you look at the sheet that I'm giving you, I think that's a pretty good little, just on the fines. Because some of those fines are huge. And I will say, on the fines, it could be a whole lot more than that. And we doing that, and that's a small parish. 300 miles of road. I know Maggitts, you know, you have triple X in there. And we doing that on just 300 miles. On 300 miles. So it's actually, it's self-sufficient period. The jury is not putting a dime into it now.
But the additional revenue that you get, you put it into roads?
You can, but Red River hadn't just hadn't chosen. We just been doing some things in our program. Like we've been moving them to another buildings and stuff like that. So we hadn't even got that far yet. But yes, it was designed that you could, you know, if need to, you know, need be. But in Red River, it hadn't been necessary that we do so. So we was actually just putting it back into that particular unit, you know, right now to enhance it, to make it better. And that's what Red River do. But you can do that, like in Boja and stuff like that because your fines, they can be huge. Because on some of those trucks, the law prescribes a big penalty on it.
So, I'm sorry, you continue.
Well, Mr. Jesse, so is this just the CDU?
No, that's our road budget right there.
That's the whole road now? Because I was like, is it not working out there?
I had probably yelled it out on mine. But you'll find that the CDU part is in there too. And then the income part, just go where it say fines and permits. All the fines and permits are gonna be CDU.
I want a job if that was the salary for CDU. Just let me know, I want a job. Okay, all right.
Yeah, all the fines and the permit stuff is gonna be, gonna be collected by the CDU. Because the road departments, you know, they don't have nothing to do with the roads.
Okay.
See, right here, I got it. Certain areas right there. See, and right up on the top, it's gonna say road citations. That's just in the four years that we talking about. And then the road permit fees, you gonna talk, that's just the road permit fees right there is almost me and a half.
What is the supply side of your road department?
They vary on the size and weight of the trucks. The little cheapy-cheapy is, we talk about that because it can be all the way down to $10, which we get a whole lot of $10. And some ain't right with some of the $10 ones. We knew they were worth on the $10.
We have a $25 road use permit.
Okay.
It's made for the loggers and the different folks like that. It's just gonna be in and out of an area a lot. And that's a $25 permit that covers all the trucks in their fleet. It doesn't cover, that's not a $25 per truck fee. That's a $25 per event fee. And it's good for 30 days. Now, we're probably gonna revamp that a little bit. And also, what he's talking about is if it's a legal load, it's not over 10,000 or 80,000 pounds, they can get a $10 permit for that. And a lot of your oil companies that are just moving in and out are just wearing that permit out. So we gotta look at that and make adjustments in it. So this program is however you guys wanna set it up. You can do whatever you wanna do with it, set it up any way you want it to go. Now, I just had two rigs move in. I had a rig move out off Meach Road. And that was about a mile down one of our roads. And their permit fees for that rig move was $99,000. Or 99, I thought 9,900.
Yeah.
We just had one move in. We finished the rig move yesterday or the day before yesterday. And they went about a half mile stretched down one of our roads. And their permit fee was 11,000. And the reason for that is, you know, each rig is configured differently. It's got different weights for different commodities on that rig. So some rigs, you can move for a little bit less and some rigs you gotta pay a little bit more because of the weight of the vehicle.
Is it the, I prefer to say that you pretty much adopted Caddo's fee schedule?
Boja, we shopping more Bojas than Caddo.
And then we made, and then the good thing about it is, you can take all three and you can take whatever portions you like. Because some of the stuff, like in Caddo, we'd never have that in Red River. So we took that particular stuff out. Some of the things that was in Boja, now, we didn't do that particular part. And then like on the regular road use permit now, we've been had that in play now, way before he got there. That was probably 20, I lost track of time because I was talking about Mr. Page. So that's been a good 15 years or so and it's been $25. And I decided, you know, and our jury, you know, they backed me on that. On just getting a regular permit makes no difference what loaded truck that it was, whether it was timber or whatever. Because in Red River, we wanna know what roads that you own. Because when something go wrong, we wanna know who to go to, you know, because some was just like the ditches and the pipes and all that kind of stuff. They were just messing them up. They just leave the stuff there. They didn't do the job just right. They was pulling out at the night. They was putting mud and stuff in the road in the middle of the night. And we wanted to know the operator and we wanted a 24-hour number to call. And that was parish-wide. So that's why we said everybody get a permit. And yes, we did have a lot of kickback on that. But once you getting up in the middle of the night because, you know, mud all over the place and they leaving stuff in the middle of the road, because people, we found out that a lot of folk just don't care. You know, and they don't care whether public get home or not home. And it didn't take too many nights to get up like that for our folks. And we required everybody just to get a permit because we just wanted $25 was for the whole fleet. So if they couldn't do $25 and they got 15 trucks, there's something wrong. And then it was that 24-hour number there.
Oh, no, I'm just saying the parish president have a question and then Mr. Carolyn Roar behind you.
Okay, no problem.
Do y'all cover the non-licensed vehicles, ATVs? Do you take care of that?
No, the sheriff's office normally takes care of that.
Okay. Exemptions from, do you check license? See if they got proper license to drive them?
When we stop them, yeah, we check their license.
So you pull a truck of grain over and he don't have a CDL? He's a farm worker?
Let me tell you how I feel about farm workers. Mr. Bundrick down in Caddo Parish, in Red River Parish called me one day and said, Mr. Woodard, I need to get a permit. He said, I'm going down to harvest my corn on Westdale plantation. And I said, Mr. Bundrick, you take your equipment down there and do what you need to do. I said, because the state allows for stuff in South Louisiana, they give the farmers a break down there. Nor to harvest their sugarcane and their cotton and all that stuff. I said, you take your stuff down and get your product and market. I'm not gonna charge you with a permit. So I don't do anything with the farmers like that.
So I issued a burn ban yesterday. Well, I got called from farmers morning and I called Mike Strange and they are exempt from the fire ban. They can go ahead and burn if somebody else can't. So I was just wondering about those two issues.
Now, I tried to be, I tried to be commodious towards as many people as I possibly can. And like Mr. Davis says, I'm not, I'm not unreasonably harsh on people. I like to be firm and I like to be fair with folks. If I get this fellow over here that stops and he did something wrong, he had a little load that wasn't properly secured and I brought it to his attention the next time, if he dumps a load, he gets a pretty good fine. Nine times out of 10, he's gonna say, let me strap that to what's supposed to be.
Who usually gets those permits up there for your log? We're 100% logging down here.
Nor do I detect it.
So is the logger contractor responsible? Or is it the timber company that he works for?
Normally, the contractor that runs is on DOT number. Whoever runs their DOT number is responsible for their permits. That's federal DOT. So that's what we write it here too.
No, I have, Mr. Kermit.
And they can do those permits. The trucker can actually do those. If he got a signal, he can do it right there on his cell phone. See, I mean, probably how long it take the permit and get the actual confirmation?
Till it comes to me, probably less than 10 minutes. And we approve or disapprove or ask for more information. And as soon as we do that, we send it back to him and he's got his approval.
Because some of the locals, you know, that didn't have one, he give them the opportunity to get it right. That's what I was saying, he's not a stickler. That's why it's important to get the best officer, you know, for the job and not just any officer for the job. You know, some of them, they get the opportunity just to get it right. You know, even though we have signs posted and all that kind of stuff, you know, a lot of times, that don't work out. But so we do pass up a lot of fines and permit thing. But we just wanna get them right because we wanna know if damage occurred and all that kind of stuff. Who is it?
Did you have any problems with your district attorney accepting this problem? We have had problems here that the DA wouldn't, throughout the tickets.
Yeah, but the tickets don't go to the DA.
Where does it go?
They come, they come actually to us.
So what if someone won't pay their fine?
They got, well...
You don't have that very often, I'm sure.
That's correct because it's minimal where the tickets are. And then when you start talking about heavy load, see, because you can go to the federal motor carrier, it's other weights that you can go, even the DA, if you gave the ticket to her to get it collected, well, you can go and you can put that company name on the federal motor carriers and it'll adversely affect that person's trucking industry.
You enter the DOT numbers.
So you're gonna get, you're gonna get paid that small ticket and especially if it's not going toward their official records, no form the way, they gonna try to make it right.
That's great.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
How do you tend with somebody that drives a log truck that lives down that parish road? That comes in loaded and unloaded daily?
Loaded, they need a permit. And we discourage loaded loads just going just because you're going home. Because you do, I mean, because, I normally get involved other ways because then I start assessing the damages that you cause.
It's better if they drop that trailer, the trucks out?
That's what I was thinking, bobtail in and out.
Bobtail in and bobtail out, yes, sir.
Yeah, some do, some don't.
And when you start, once he turn it over to me and once you start assessing what it's time to fix, oh, it gets there a kitchen real fast. And then you can take it, you can take it a many steps further as you want. Because you gotta do something because that person is not gonna be the only one that live on that road. And you may have 30 others.
Thank you. I know we're running low on time, but I got one last question, Mr. Woodard. Do you typically carry a weapon?
Yes, yes. I'm post-certified, I rise, I train with the sheriff's office in Red River Parish. So I qualify, when they qualify, I go through all of the post-certification training courses that the state requires.
Who carries your insurance?
Jesse. And most of our insurances carried by trial.
But you don't have to go to the sheriff's department for your insurance, huh?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanna say this, if y'all need us, if you need information from us, if you need any of us to come, just let us know. We'll arrange to, you know, come as many times as we need to. We'll bring some of the folks from Caddo, Boja with us as well. If you just let us, you know, just let us, just let us know.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're gonna be at the regional forum meeting here in a few days?
Yes, sir.
Bring him with you, because there may be some more questions.
I guess it's my first one then, huh?
Davis and Woodard showed, yeah.
It'll be a good meal and a nice time. All right, we have our triad on Zoom. Carolyn, are y'all there? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm here, sorry, Jordan.
Just to kinda bobtail into that, I did ask Carolyn and Mike to look at grants that might help us get this program off the ground, whether it be for vehicles or weights or whatever. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Carolyn, and take it away.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Carolyn, for asking us to join your meeting today. I know we had an opportunity to meet some of the parish council members. But Carolyn Zumpino, I'm the president of triad. And Mike Epifania is my senior associate. And we've been working very closely with Mr. Lee over the past couple months really to talk about what are the priority projects for the parish and our role really is then to take that back to our team and drill down and figure out what the best resources are in terms of grant funding to help implement these projects. And, you know, it's involved and it is a process. It often starts with a very broad discussion. As we continue the conversations, that's our opportunity to really drill down. And at our last meeting, we were able to get some additional priority projects from the parish council. And that included discussions as it related to the courthouse renovation and preservation project. There were some, talked about some public works equipment. And then some other areas were there that included the dredging and culvert issues. And then, I'm sorry, commercial vehicle enforcement components. So Mike did send out the updated matrix that included these priority projects. So now, really, we just wanted the opportunity to, and we don't have to go through each line item, but we believe that we've found some... item, but, uh, we believe that we've found some programs that are a good fit for the majority of these projects. And now really is a time for us to, to drill down on the specifics and we're back into the, what is the best fit for the project and what's the best fit for the parish in terms of which projects do you wanna address first and how can we align that then with the funding sources to make the schedule fit as well. So, uh, I'm not sure if you have a copy of that, but what we can do is share a copy of the matrix on the screen.
I, I printed a copy out, Carolyn, I have a copy.
Oh, perfect. Um, and, and again, I, I know that you probably have a very robust agenda, so I don't wanna take up too much of your time, but you see, the way we reorganized the matrix was, um, going across the top of each section, we listed the priority project. So, here we have the courthouse and there are different types of funding, um, and I believe I mentioned this, there's not always one funding source that is going to complete the project. There may be some historical components that need to be addressed, um, there could be some capital needs such as a roof repair replacement. Uh, so, as we, again, drill down on the specifics on the project, we'll be able to parse this out even further. Um, so we can get, at this point in terms of our team really serving the parish best with next steps, it would be great to narrow in on where you wanna focus in terms of what projects you wanna address first. And then we can put together a list of all the information we would need for, for that particular project, um, and, and then work to identify, on this list, what's the funding and what are our next steps time wise.
Carolyn, just speaking from, I, I really think the council and the president is really interested in this commercial vehicle, um, which will tie into the highway software that we had talked about, trying to get some kind of funding for that. Um, on, we just received a LGAAP award from the state for some, some highway equipment, so we were able to get some funding through that, that program.
Are you, are you, may I ask, Mr. Zumpino, are you talking about a numerical priority system from one through six or are we doing it tiers, like the first two, the second two, the second, next, uh, two?
That's a great question. It, uh, frankly, it could be all of them. It, it's gonna be however the parish wants to address these projects. Um, this is a new relationship between us, so I think it would be best if we identified for now one project, let's pursue the funding and, you know, we can show your team what we can do in terms of getting that funding.
Yeah, so far we haven't gotten any, so maybe we'll focus on at least one. Well, I think, I think we all can agree that commercial vehicle enforcement is, uh, probably gonna be a high priority and I think it's, uh, everybody here kinda agrees with it and it, uh, but what's next, I'm not sure.
So, what next, what's next would be, um, if we could, any information that you have on the actual program and I, I, we're able to, Carolyn was perfect that we're able to participate in this meeting so we could hear a little bit about, um, about what's being presented, but to the extent that we can get real numbers and, um, the, the cost estimate for what, whatever needs to be included in that. So, I heard mention of, there's a programmatic side and then there's also equipment that will be involved. So, it may be that one of these programs is a fit for the entire, uh, commercial vehicle enforcement program, or we may have to parse it out and do something that covers the programmatic side and then the, um, equipment side. And also, when we talk about timing as well, hopefully we'll be able to meet at another meeting, um, but you'll see on the funding list, we identified, uh, the congressionally-directed spending funding as an opportunity for majority of your projects. These are the former earmarks, um, the time, they're not, they're not gonna come out until the next fiscal year, but now is the time where we wanna start planning, um, and having preliminary discussions with our legislative partners. Depending on the, the magnitude of this commercial vehicle enforcement project and program, we might recommend that that be a part of it.
Okay, so I will work, um, to try to get some good numbers on a vehicle if we, or whatever we need to put this program into action, um, and I will get that to you as soon as I can.
Okay, and I think, so what we're seeing here, there may be some, again, if there are pieces that we didn't consider, uh, that's part of the enforcement program, there may be other funding sources, but as we look at the two biggies, which were the US Department of Homeland Security and Agriculture, the deadlines, um, for USDA, it's rolling annually and, uh, will they go to put, the, the, you can submit that one, whenever it's ready is really the deadline. And then for the emergency management program, that's also typically cyclical every year. So, again, timing is perfect to plan for the next round of funding, which should open up, uh, within the next couple of months.
So, usually the sheriff here, um, applies for the homeland security monies?
Perfect, so we...
Um, so maybe we need to talk to the sheriff and ask, because I was asked from Mary, um, a week or so ago if, if we've talked about any needs as far as grants, so maybe we can leverage that with something else to, to help make this happen.
Yeah, we could have the sheriff's department include whatever pieces of the commercial enforcement project, um, are applicable and then that, that could just be woven right into their application, kinda step out, which is perfect.
Yeah, I agree.
Great, so, um, so again, we can, we can have as many conversations and as frequently as you want, but I think in terms of next steps, I agree, um, with you, it makes sense, let's target one priority and then let's get a success under our belts, get secure some funding and then we can continue to drill down on next steps and next projects.
But, any idea what would be number two? It's curious, 'cause I, when I look at the list of potential sources for the, uh, commercial vehicle enforcement, it seems kind of lean, okay? Especially emergency management, earmarks, which is not so much, uh, grants or what have you. Um, is there a number two priority that we can at least identify now? So, we would...
Is that, I'm sorry, was that a question to me?
Well, yeah, everybody, actually.
Well, I, I think we could probably talk about it and get back with, with them and say, we wanna, of course, um, I think everybody's in agreement, this commercial vehicle something, we wanna move as fast, but maybe this is a longer process, like a bigger goal, maybe.
And the reason I say that, some, there's some of them actually easier target, like for instance, the community center is a very mu- much easier target, 'cause I've looked into that closely and, and it's actually meet with them, move forward and, uh, so something like that, if we could choose at least the number two, we'll have two upon the morn.
Yeah, that'd be great and what we can do is, as Mr. Way just said, information we can put together then, um, a summary of the plan for next steps and how we would approach priority one and priority two. That sounds great.
And then that would direct us to calls and we could predict that, right? Okay.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. So, so my understanding, we have the two, the, uh, the enforcement and the community center?
Uh, it's kinda which way we're leaning, although we've not had much debate, you know?
Well, we can, we can get back to Carolyn on that and not tie her up anymore, um, unless there's some else, anyone else have a question for her?
Well, I, I, I do have another, 'cause...
Okay.
I, I don't know this and so I'm, I'm asking around here, whatever she needs, do you know what that is to advance this along? Does somebody know?
I, I know, yes, I believe I do.
Okay, that, that was...
That's it? Carolyn, you have anything else?
No, I think they'd said, um, Mr. Way had asked me, you know, the direct connection, so if there's additional information you need from us or vice versa, we'll, we'll keep that line open. Uh, but again, we really do appreciate you taking the time to let us be a part of your meeting and before the events and some of these projects and actually getting the money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a great day.
You too.
All right. Before we move on too far, the, we're talking here, those guys talked to us about commercial vehicle and you talked about it here. Uh, let me ask, Mr. Mansour, uh, Mark Carey sent you a document, have you been able to go through that 'cause he wanted it polished up before he presented it?
Well, I, I did. What, what, uh, what was sent to me was... Mark, was it Caddo?
It's Caddo.
Or Boja?
Caddo.
It was Caddo. My concern is, I, I don't really have enough understanding of what the parish is trying to accomplish with the program. And the, the gentleman that talked today explained what they did, which is kind of what I, we got back with Mr. Carey on, is until we really know what we're trying to do, it's difficult to decide, we're gonna take part of this out of Caddo or we're gonna take part of this out of Red River. And that's what the gentleman mentioned today was, when they were doing it, they didn't follow Caddo, he followed more Caddo than, than, or more Boja than Caddo, I think is what he said.
Yeah, and altered it slightly for them.
And altered it depending on what they intended to do with their program or how they wanted to set it up. And they also, uh, came up with some other ideas independently. As a lawyer, I can't do that. I don't, I don't really understand the program and, and I really, that's for y'all to decide, you know, the, so that was a discussion with Mr. Carey and, and now listening to this gentleman, I think maybe we need to get Boja's document, um, and, and see what Red River did or, do we have Red River's?
Oh, we, yeah, we do have.
We do?
Um, and their handbook, which mirrors exactly what the ordinance is saying. Um, would a technique be a conference where we could sit down and go line by line and, and describe, you know, like a Chinese menu, we take one from here and here and put it here?
That, that would be helpful, so, because that's y'all's decision. I don't wanna make that decision. As the lawyer, I don't wanna say, "Well, no, we're not gonna have this apply" and, and omit that without y'all, y'all making that decision. So, the, the suggestion, and I met with Mr. Harrington about it and we went over it, was have, have the council or Mr. Carey, who, not that he knows more than y'all do, but he seems to be more up to, uh, in, in tune with what he wants to do, to give me, to make some decisions and be able to tell me, "Look, I went through Caddo, we don't want, we don't wanna do what Caddo did here. Let's just not use this section. We like this section of what Boja did or Red River did and let's, you know, incorporate that into, in ordinance." And I can do that. I just don't wanna make the decisions. I want y'all to make the decisions about the program. And I assume get input from, from, uh, from the president.
Do you have a copy of our ordinances that we already have in place?
I, I, I do, there's really not a whole lot there. I made a copy of them to compare them to the Caddo, um, ordinances and there really wasn't much...
There's not much there on commercial vehicles.
In our ordinances on commercial vehicles.
I, I just wonder, I didn't know if you'd looked, we do have ordinances in place.
I, I did and I have a, a copy of, it, it, you know, part of what we were, we were reviewing, but... And Mr. Carey did, I mean, he provided me with a, with a draft and this was taken from Caddo. My concern was that their references in this draft to other sections that were, were not referencing Nakadish ordinances, they were referencing other Caddo ordinances. And I, I'm like, you know, I think we need to start it a different way. We need to decide what program we wanna do and then we can borrow and adapt from other parish ordinances.
Although, I think we should adhere to their fee schedule concept because it's pretty consistent between Caddo, Boja and Red, and then we could kinda adopt that and then cherry pick what we want from the other things. Uh, I don't think that's hard...
Terms of enforcement?
Exactly. I don't think that's hard to do, but I think probably the committee's gonna be required to do it, uh, to sit down and go line by line and with, with the help from council 'cause we gotta make sure it aligns with whatever state laws and previous laws that we have. So, uh, that's a suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
I got a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, uh, we really need to set up a transportation committee and involve the timber companies and their attorneys before we get too much deeper, because they're gonna have some input that they're gonna be wanting to put. What we're trying to do primarily is make whoever tear that road up responsible for fixing. And we don't have a manpower to go out there and follow behind them and do it, you know, get a contractor, which they do have some contractors around that take care of their roads. Uh, we don't have anything to do with state highways, that's a whole different ballgame, but parish roads and primarily just make them aware that we're gonna make them responsible.
See, I wasn't sure if the parish sheriff is enforcing weights and measures or...
From my, Dignan's with him on this so far, he don't really like to play with it and he kinda limped it on manpower. And I've talked to him, DA, and, and told him about this, but we have got to get our timber companies involved. So, let's set up a transportation committee and name it that and, and let them know.
Okay, so there'll be a couple parts of the committee's responsibility, one is outreach to the timber companies, one have you, so they'll know what's coming, that we're not, and we'll emphasize to them, we're, we're not creating an uneven playing field, we're trying to make it more even and more aligned. We're trying to align with our fellow parishes and with the state, so we'll all be in alignment here as opposed to, you go for one parish, you got rules, you go to Nakadish Parish, "Hey, giddy up, do what you want," you know?
See, I wasn't sure if Red River was focusing more on the gas and oil industry than they were timber, and he mentioned today that they do timber permitting for timber. And that seems like primarily you're gonna, you're gonna be dealing with that more in Nakadish Parish probably than Red River is.
Yeah, that's true, but we...
And less...
But we do know we have two saltwater injection wells coming, it's gonna be a lot of traffic for that.
Right.
Mr. Davis said there's 2,500 trucks for each new well that they punch a hole in Red River Parish. So, that's a lot of trucks and if they punch a new hole here or put a saltwater injection well, you know, that's a lot of traffic. So, yes, it's mostly for commercial logging, but all the commercial vehicles be applicable. So, we, I mean, I, I suppose you want us to reach out to the gas industry too?
Sure, yeah, anybody that's got a truck.
Okay. And so, so part one will be outreach and then part two, two will, will actually get the text and put it down there with helping, the question is timeline that I have, uh, this can't be done before Monday.
We have to introduce the ordinance first. And until we introduce and pass the ordinance, we, we shouldn't do anything else. Once we get the ordinance passed, then we consider our committees and different areas to be working on funding, uh, and anything else that we see we need to do. But at least we guys get the ball rolled at first and we don't have that done because we have not dealt with it from an ordinance standpoint.
Well, you, you wanna pass an ordinance and then decide what it is?
No, we know what it is. We know what it is, it's just how we're going to manage it, how we're gonna get all the information, um, that we need to move forward in which direction, because we could be moving forward and, and picking up, looking at software, okay? That doesn't have to be the first thing that we do. Buying a vehicle, that's something else, but at least talking about it and coming up with the right decisions.
Mr., the attorney, uh, procedurally, can, can it be introduced and then between introduction and final vote, the actual wording?
I, I think, what I understand, Mr. Allen is... I think, what I understand Mr. Allen is saying is, rather than wait till you've got a twenty-nine-page document and ordinance, you're talking about passing generally a non-specific ordinance approving the process of implementing this program. And then the, the specific details of the ordinance can come later.
To be voted all later?
Exactly.
So, in other words, to summarize a page on my briefing there is what we're basically voting for. The words on, on, on page one, you know?
Can I say something?
Summary.
Once you get Red River's ordinance, it's not twenty-nine pages, it's like, uh, uh, two pages, maybe a page and a half.
And that's probably what they did, right? I hadn't seen it.
Yeah, it is not no big twenty, what that right there, it's not that long. And they took parts from different ones, from Cato and Bossier, and they built it. But they do have something you need to start off with, telling what you really need, like if you're gonna, just say you don't start with just the, the CV, whether that unit or whatever. The code enforcement, you need to have an ordinance stating that in there that you're gonna focus on that.
List all the fees, all the permits, all the procedures.
You can't just go wild, you know, just a simple ordinance, you guys should kinda have something to balance it out, to, um, let them know what you really wanna do. So, I'm really suggesting that I would give all the council, and y'all can have the committee, whoever y'all set up, I give y'all that Red River ordinance, and y'all can look at it and see what would best for Nakadish.
I haven't seen Red River's.
I sent it to you.
You did send it, okay.
I sent it.
Oh, you will send, okay.
I get it, I can get it.
Okay, so we can do it, yeah, alright.
You said have a committee first?
No, I, I heard them say something about-
Oh, ordinance.
A committee, I, I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm suggesting, I know you're not telling them what to do, but it sound like to me that you're maybe-
No, that's what they had said.
Suggesting a committee would develop the ordinance after they had all the information.
Uh, did, did you mention?
I think he mentioned it, I was just picking, yeah, I was the same point. Someone said a committee.
Mr. Salters said that, and then Mr.-
There will be committees associated with, yes, because there's so much detail that we have to do. But we've got to get started somewhere, other than saying we got a bunch of committees out there doing-
Why can't you start with the transportation committee?
Pardon?
Why can't you start with the transportation committee and let them develop all of these?
I'm not, I'm not against what committees we start with. Those we have to talk about first, and, and we have to talk about those as well. And then we decide which committee we're gonna start with. Who can we have on them, who's gonna be willing to work on us, you know? We're gonna have to have some ourselves and some outside, yes, to work on this stuff. But at least we've got, at least we've got a path that we're going down through, if that is.
If we get the, the text to Red River's, and then we can share it amongst the committee, whoever we decide it's gonna be, and then we conceivably can shoot it to you quickly and have it by Monday.
By Monday?
I think it's possible. Assuming it's not a twenty-nine-page thing.
It's not.
And that we're, assuming we're going to adopt wholesale what Red River Parish does. Because otherwise, if we gotta go through Cato's and Bossier's and others, then you're talking about an extended amount of time.
I think realistically, you're gonna be jammed up on time to be able to do it Monday. That's y'all's decision, I-
But if it's not ready, it's not ready, that's the way it'll be.
So, my concern, and I know nothing about roads and less about enforcement, is we need to, they only have, what, three hundred and something miles of road, and we have eight hundred? I, I just don't know if it, like, like you said, I don't know if we're gonna be able to just send it in there and go, go. We may have to address it. And, and one of the things that I really think, as I've talked to a few of you about this saltwater, saltwater injection, which, talking to Bambol and Lincoln and Wynne, they say it just eats the roads. When I asked about it, they said, what, they, one of the ways that they would combat that is to make the permitting for those vehicles significant. Because their application says they will pay whatever permit is applicable. And right now, we don't have it. But, I mean, they're not gonna start saltwater injection tomorrow.
No, we, we have time to get something done.
Yeah.
Well, that, that moves back to agriculture.
And timber and all that, yeah.
We're an agricultural parish, and we better protect agriculture some way in the job.
Yeah, we don't wanna make it onerous on agriculture, that's true. However, the violators are the big load trucks messing up some of the roads.
Alright, you realize this is not going anywhere.
Fast.
What do you mean, it's not going anywhere?
Well, talking about committees, you're talking about meeting with other people, and you've essentially thrown out the draft ordinance that he put up. You're further back now than you were when we started this working meeting.
I didn't intend to throw out the draft, but he did.
And I, I don't see that you can pass a nothing and say, we'll fill it in later.
We've already tried that. Remember our last go at highway permits? And that's exactly what happened. It was, we'll make it up as we go, we'll figure it out, and then it just fell flat.
We did, in fact, pass an ordinance at that time, it's on the books already, but it never been updated.
That's right.
But we, the, the, the actual specifics of who's gonna pay and how much they're gonna pay was never developed.
Who takes the money and all that stuff?
Yeah, it was never developed, so it just sits there because we don't know who to, and not that that's my, and I don't, I'm not asking for any job. But we haven't developed what a dump truck will pay, if they'll pay anything, what a, a log truck. Is it just if there, you know, there's a lot of blanks in there that has to be filled in, and I, it's not my thing, but I would rather us have it kinda, well, pretty well ironed out instead of passing an ordinance and then having to go back and take another two months to pass an ordinance to change the first proof. That's just my, my issue.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I can recommend, we could form a committee, do all the work, wait till next month to introduce, introduce next month, November, vote on it then, and, and December, final vote. And so, it's just delayed thirty days, but we'll get those things that need to be done that Mr. Salters said and Mr. Mansfield said. And thirty days, we've been many years without this ordinance, we can wait thirty days. And, and I would recommend that you pick the three. Those three guys.
It can't be three, council members.
Two guys, I'm sorry, two guys, we don't wanna have a core. You heard that, Mr. Attorney.
We'll do that. Make, make note of that.
Those two biggest districts, Mr. Cheatwood and I, probably make a lot of sense.
Okay, going back to the first page, we're gonna have some appointments on the agenda. We have, oh, we got, we got appointments for the library board, but we got two. Ms. Bamberg here wanna speak to the council about something for the library. But they do have two reappointments on for the library board, well, three. One is an appointment, and two is reappointments. Mr. Thomas Rock for reappointment, Karen Terrell for reappointment, and Ms. Barbara Smith for appointment because someone resigned. Ms. Bamberg, you can come up and address what you need to address, you and Mr. Rock?
Hello, thanks for letting me speak to you today. Basically, what we came to tell you is that we wanted to keep you informed of what we're doing at the library as far as having two more branches put in the surrounding areas. We think we have secured a place in Natches for a, a library branch. We're still trying to hash out some place between where you turn off Coldwater, where you turn off to go to Providence, and Robeleen to put a branch. We think that we kind of would like to have it on the highway so that it can serve several communities like Spanish Lake and different places like that. That's the idea of the Natches branch, that it would be on the highway. The place we've chosen is on highway, on, right on the highway. So, it would, it would serve Clutville and all the lake area. Everybody has to come out onto the highway to get to town, so we would be right there available for all the communities in that area. The same thing is what we want in Robeleen, so we'll be available for all of those small communities around there. We will have a meeting room in those two libraries. I come from Wynne Parish, and I know in Wynne Parish, we had a huge meeting room, and all of the police, anytime they had activities, or the fire department, any water board, all of their meetings were always held at the library. Any council meetings or anything like that was always held at the library because we had such a nice meeting area to have those kind of things. So, we will have a meeting room in these branches and to serve any community for anything that they want to. We're gonna try to plan it so that the meeting room would be available after hours. We, the county branch is not available after hours because basically we have to open up the whole library to service that meeting room. But the way the library was designed in Wynneville, we could just have that part open and then have somebody come and close it up after the meeting. So, a lot of the meetings were held from like six to eight at night and everything. And so, we wanna offer that as service, but we're asking too, to, if any of you know any place, any location near Robeleen that's somewhere on the highway or around there, that let us know. And we also ask for your support that when we do finalize some of the places that, you know, you help us with going through the process of what we need to do to be able to purchase the land and then, you know, put the buildings out for bid. What, what we, the reason we want to do both of them, we think it would be more cost-effective to build two at the same time, two with the same architect, two with the same, everything same, and just build them and get them over with. So, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Members of the council, it's a number of y'all, I really don't know, but my name's Tommy Rock. And of course, I've been on the, on the library board for a hundred years, but not quite that many. But in two years, it will be forty. It will be forty years. That's a great, great pleasure to be to, you know, serve some of the things that we've done. And really, we are, we are nearing the end of what we promised of Natches Parish when we ended up with the mortgage nearly years ago from the village to the town. Because back in those days, we had branches all over the parish, and we had buildings, I should say, with a few old books in them, that's all we had. But what we now have, we think is much better, with the main branch here in town, the branch in the north, and of course, once we get to one in the west and the south, we will, we will have achieved the commitment that we pledged when we went out with that deal, and we renewed it a couple times, you know, since. Our big thing, just as Ms. Bamberg said, we're, we're really ready now to recommend to the council to purchase the, the land south of town on the highway one day in Natches. Because, you know, as you ever know, you know, you all played us as members of the board of the library, but you're the owners of the property, and you, you have to actually purchase the, the land. And we'll own, you know, the library and all of that, but we do a lot of that legwork with the, with the architects and all of that, but that's the step where we are now. And so, I would, I would just think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I would probably call a special meeting after, you know, we, we, you know, just go and get the resolution so we will come to you with the property that we recommend that we purchase, you know, in, in Natches. And, and then, and we'll take it from there, and then once we get that, we'll, I think we'll get the ball rolling. Because I'm sure you hear it, but as I go around town, people ask all the time, because so many people know that I'm chair of the board, and it's the topic, when are we gonna see some action? You know, when, when are we gonna, when are we gonna see some dirt being moved so that we can? And we're ready, we're ready to do that, we're ready to do it. Do you have any questions for us, especially you do people, that's it.
Do you have to own the structure?
Y'all own the structure.
No, let me do, does it have to be, can it be rented? For the library to use?
Most of the time, that's what happens usually when people say, can we convert buildings to house a library? The problem with that is books are very heavy. So, we lucked out as far as the main branch had the safe and everything in it. So, it had a foundation that was heavy enough to hold the books. But you just can't go in any kind of building and convert it over to the library because books are unbelievably heavy. And then you have to have things like the bathrooms that are accessible to everybody and all these kinds of accessibility.
But if you had a community center in a place and you had, it's built for weight, and you had offices to rent in it, the community center would be called, you could conceivably operate out of something like that and not have to own the facility, huh?
I don't know about the legalities as far as whether the parish, because we don't own anything that we have at the library. So, I don't know anything, that would be a council question.
The only thing, Mr. Carey, that I can answer you close to that, is over the years, especially being on board for so long, I've seen where they had like, you know, book drops and stuff like that in, you know, some other big community centers. But to actually have a library like we have with, you know, with computers and the whole aspect of our summer reading programs and things that we, I, I'm not seeing, you know, there, you know.
Yeah, if you, give me a call, your chair.
Alright, go ahead. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, you keep saying the parish owns the building and the land.
The library pays for, you know, we have to budget, but we don't own anything. If we have a vehicle, like the trucks that we own, I mean, that we paid for, the parish owns. So, if we get rid of them, we have to, the parish owns.
Whatever property, because you've been looking for property out of Robeleen a long time.
A long time.
And you'll probably not get what you ideally would want. And it'll probably be bigger and cost more. And the parish is to pay for that. How do?
No, we pay for it, but the parish owns it.
Oh, okay.
So, the library, is there, it's, it's, it's just another fund, I mean, I'm not trying to, they're just another fund in our, in our budget. I mean, it's like the library control board is the department head over that fund. So, they're like, Ms. Harris is over her grants. Their board is over the library's funds and the, and their budget and, and their procedures and all that. So, they are a part of us, even though they, they do have their own board, just like the fire districts and stuff.
So, so the cost of this land and building?
Will come out of the library fund.
Yes.
Will come out of there and not out of the general fund.
That's right, out of the library fund.
But when we, but when we're finished with the building, just like when the, the building that was on the river, when it was finished, then it reverts back to the parish, and the parish gets all the proceeds from it.
Well, I don't want y'all to be finished with it.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, when we moved to the new branch twenty years ago, or however long ago, the building that was, um, it became, it, it, we finished using it, and so it reverted back.
Okay.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, I look forward to calling. Thank you, I look forward to calling.
We'll get a call. Thank you all very much.
Tommy?
Yes, sir.
We still have our trip to take.
Oh, yeah, just let me know. You know, I'm supposed to be retired, but I stay, I stay so busy. I've been, you know, jumping like I don't know what's up, but we'll get that trip.
All right.
And we do have one thing to say about the Natches property. You know, everything in Natches floods. So we're worried about what we can build and how we're gonna build it. But there's no property in Natches that are anywhere around that wouldn't be in the flood area. We just have to build it up.
Just build a dam around it, put pumps in it.
They said, well, build a dam, huh?
They got a man that's got a dentist down there, built a house down there, he built a dam around it, put pumps in it.
No, it's Danny, who owns the land. But it's like two or three spots of land before you get to the dollar store.
You remember what, remember Jack Fuller, he had years ago that had his home, it was right next door to me.
Yeah, and y'all put, I think y'all put a tower on his property. And the tower's gonna be on the back side, and we're on the front side, right?
And we're right there on the highway, that's one that we recommend that we buy.
Have I what?
Have you got an architect?
No, no, we, Jessica got an architect a long time ago when there was gonna be some property in Roebling. And he came to talk to me last week to find out whatever. But, I mean, that would have to be out of bids. Oh, what was his name? I'll have to get you on that. But anyway, he told me we need an acre and a half. And so if anybody has an acre and a half, they can sell us.
An acre and a half.
Acre and a half. We would prefer, Canty is on two acres. And so we would kind of prefer two acres, but an acre and a half would do. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Then we got reappointment, Mr. Louis Morgan to the Fire District One Board. Reappointment, Mr. Marty Summerlin to the Natches Parish Tourism. Then we got reappointment, Mr. Larry Cooper to the Northwest Louisiana Game and Fish Preserve Board. And on this one here is the first time I ever done this, is the council is need to pick one of the following out of Gregory Dugan, Jared Longwa, or Pete Johnson, Jr. for Waterworks District Two.
Wow, you can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, all right, this John Morgan and Fire District One. I'm leaving Fire District One. I just don't want any conflict of interest, you know, being the council and the fire district. I'll still be a volunteer, but I'm leaving the board. So they're gonna have to replace me.
Once you put in your resignation, I guess, Jennifer gave it, then she was sent.
No, my understanding is it has expired.
Inspired, okay.
So, that's good. Like I don't have enough.
Okay, all right, since we don't have no more, no confusion on G, let's go to B on the introduction. We got council to introduce ordinance twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-four to authorize an act of sale by the parish of Natches to sell certain adjudicated properties. And that's the parcel number. And do you have any questions about that?
One's in Canty, Ms. Carolyn, and one is out on, in Creston, but it's, you know, Creston's not in a municipality, so.
It's only got the one parcel number on it.
It should have two, there should be two parcels.
I only have one.
The ordinance has two.
Are you looking at seven B, is it?
Yes.
It's got one.
I looked at it.
That's where I got the, because in my report, it has two.
This one has one.
So which one is this?
Should be two.
This is the one you sent me.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I just know that there's got to be two.
I suggest if there's a second parcel, it should get it to you so you can put it on the agenda.
Right. This is a work session, so this doesn't have to run out to the public.
I'll, I'll, as soon as my, my, what date did you? Can you see your email, what day did I send it to you? I mean, we don't have to hold everybody up unless y'all want to.
Once we get it today.
Okay, I'll double check everything.
Okay. When this, when it's over, just go ahead and check it, because I have to get it out today.
Gotcha.
To be posted for today.
I got you.
Okay. C, council to introduce ordinance twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-four to effect a zoning amendment, a parcel number to, the parcel number zero-zero-one, zero-two-six-two-one-zero-zero-A to B two zoning for the start of an education and tutoring business.
Got it.
The property is in section thirty-one, township nine, north range eight west, with a physical address of seven, zero-two-one, highway six, Natches, Louisiana, as shown on the survey attached here too, approved by the Parish Planning Commission on October the seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Any questions on that one? Okay. Public hearing. We have council adopt ordinance eighteen to post a speed limit on Sunk Hill Road. Is there any discussion on that one? B, council to adopt ordinance nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-four, ordinance adopting the budget for the twenty-twenty-five year. Any questions on that one?
I have a question. What is, it says, and with an amendment? An ordinance introducing the budget, and then at the end, it says, and with an amendment. And I read the ordinance, and I didn't understand what that referred to.
Well, I don't know, I just got it from what?
Is that from you, Julie?
No, I mean, I just send her, I think, I think she just uses the previous year's ordinance and copies it, right? And just puts the change to date.
It's been on there, so.
Okay, I was just curious that I was.
I guess when she does the amendments for, when she do the amendments throughout the year, that's probably what she's talking about, like she has one on there now.
Yeah, to amend twenty-twenty-four.
But we can take it off.
Yeah, we can take it off.
Yes.
You want to do that? Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
There are some items on the.
What's that?
I'm looking for it.
It's got maybe life words on it.
Account.
Account.
Account would be though. Make an appropriation for East Department project and account.
Okay.
There are some items that have been discussed and need to be discussed. Because we're voting on this, we're voting on it as written. And there are some discrepancies we need to go, go over those and look at them.
What's the discrepancies?
About some questions need to be answered. I don't know if I want to go through it right now, a little bit later. We got until Monday.
We need to go through it because, I mean, I met with Mr. Humm for an hour and a half yesterday and answered a lot of his questions. I would rather get it situated.
I've had a meeting, too. We looked under the council budget. We asked that six thousand be put in for miscellaneous and another ninety-five for professional services. I sent you an email on that, hadn't heard anything back. Have you addressed those?
I have questions, what professional services would you need?
Well, we have two, we have two programs going right now. Number one, the one Mr. Carey is working on. And number two, the communication one that Marty and I are working on with the city. And most of the.
Most of the stuff I've talked about, you've already carved that out into a separate line, right?
And professional services for that would run, if we're gonna dedicate any additional revenue back to the highway, that would run through the highway budget. So that wouldn't be a council budget.
So you're saying that yours is?
Yeah, so that would include software.
Yes, it would include software.
Personnel, vehicles, salary.
Yeah, all that.
All that.
Yeah, that's why we got it.
Handheld radios, lights, sirens.
All that.
And he said thirty thousand for the weight, I mean, the scale.
Just move the scales, yeah.
So.
Yeah, so that would be highway, the.
Where would, I mean, where would we look at that, where would we see that?
Well, it would have to, it's not budgeted because it hasn't been put it in there. We'd probably have to introduce a budget amendment in January to recognize what we project revenues and what we project expenses.
We haven't approved this one yet.
I understand, but this has to be approved this month?
No. If we can't agree, it doesn't have to be approved at all.
I guess you're correct. By Home Rule Charter, it says it'll be adopted this month. But I guess you're correct. If the council chooses not to adopt the budget, then it won't be adopted.
So what you're saying is that item can't be, can't be put on the budget before we vote on it.
We don't have any idea what that amount would be. Same as I have no idea of saying how much money we could rec, hopefully, recognize, receive in this commercial.
Permitting.
Permitting and enforcement. So once that is defined, then we'll have to do a budget amendment that says, just like Jesse has, you know, permitting, what was the other things? He had a couple revenue lines, they called it citations and permit fees. And we'll probably do the same thing. We have, I mean, unless y'all know. And that could be like underneath highway as its own little section to capture the revenue and the expenditures all to itself outside of the highway.
The same way Red River did.
To keep them under highway, but not directly in highway. They could be. October the seventh is.
When you sent the email.
I think what I did wrong was I made a mistake on my memo. And I thought we had two for public hearing. But I think we did that in September. So I think I messed up. But I'm gonna verify, but it was September.
No, October seventh when you sent it.
So you would prefer not to put a placeholder until you know more defined amount?
I mean, I don't think we can make a even educated guess what that number would be. It's not tangible and approved, there's no ordinance to create it yet.
Didn't you have a figure in mind?
Well, I mean, we, it depends, okay? Because if he ends up having a vehicle, and we don't have to get a vehicle, then that reduces the cost. If we got a vehicle donated, that would be a different thing. So it is kind of nebulous right now, like you said. I mean, as long as she's factoring it in.
I mean.
You know, you understand where it's gonna go, where you're gonna take it from.
Whatever it is, it will have to come back to the council. Because one of the, by Home Rule Charter, if there is a change in operations, it has to go back through the council. That, in my opinion, is a change in operations. Because we're gonna add a CDU division to the highway.
If we pass it, then it's gonna be.
And that's what we'll take it to, to pass it. Now. What was the other thing?
Under transfers, explain eight-nine-one-oh-one.
What?
Transfer to the highway, you get an actual of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, twenty-three, budgeted one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for twenty-twenty-four. And it went by one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, you're projecting two-hundred-and-fifty for twenty-twenty-five. The question is, why a hundred thousand dollar jump?
Which, which fund are we discussing?
We're talking about general fund, twenty-twenty-four proposed budget, line item number one, transfer to the highway, eight-nine-one-oh-one.
So what we have done traditionally is if you transfer money to the, to the highway, and then, because we have like Goldona Road, which is a capital outlay, and then we move it to the capital outlay fund. So we, well, under Richmond, his proposal was for us to just set aside money every year so that in the case that we got a big program like the Goldona Road, that we would have money set aside for our match, which is twenty-five percent. Which for Goldona Road will be a million dollars. So that's how that goes. Seventy-nine million dollars that we gotta match. And we're gonna have to do it quick.
Under temporary workers.
Yes.
Looks like they're going up on the amount of money we use for those.
In the general fund?
Yes.
That is our summer workers that we traditionally, well, not traditionally, that we hadn't done in a few years, so it wasn't budgeted. I assumed, I made the assumption that that's gonna go forward, so I budgeted for the next year. That, that's what that is.
Under general fund, it says president's gasoline. What does that mean?
President has the ability to get reimbursed for his gasoline. It hasn't been done. I think Richmond maybe had sent a couple of receipts in his, in his term. Mr. Salter hasn't asked for any, but it's, it's available. It's been there since I got here in nineteen, I haven't made any changes to it.
It was looked at and then the question came up.
Oh, shit.
Trying to get all these things answered so the individuals just wanna know, you know.
I mean, I have no problem with it, Mr. Allen, I'll ask.
So if we look under the general fund, we had one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand going across, and you said the two-fifty was for what again?
We have a contract for Goldona Road. It's a million dollars. So instead of just putting an arbitrary amount, now I, we've got to come up with a million dollars. And, and also, we have to close that within a couple of years. So that's the reason why I increased that amount.
Okay, so you say the temporary workers on the other one was for the summer program?
On the general fund, yes.
All right, but we had a, this is over on temporary workers on the five-one-two-two-oh.
And which budget? Which one, I'm sorry?
It just says Highway Department, proposed budget. We had seven-five-thousand budgeted. Projected to use by the end of, uh, twenty-four, a hundred and twenty thousand. And we're budgeting another hundred and ten. What, what, why would we jump?
Because...
You can't find permanent workers, though?
We, we can't. Um, we have been having problems with permanent workers. And also, it actually becomes cheaper for us to use temporary workers than it does to hire permanent workers. And I can explain that if you would like. We, we pay Manpower a upcharge of point four-two. Um, to, so, any temporary workers that we hire through Manpower are another agency. Um, they cover their workers' comp, all their payroll taxes. If they, uh, some of them actually get health insurance through Manpower. Um, so that is the upcharge that, that we pay to compensate them.
How many temporary workers are still, how long do the temporary worker become non-temporary? Or do we look at them and they stay temporary workers forever?
Some of them do not wanna be term, permanent workers. Some of them, we decide at some point in time that they are ready. I mean, I think we normally do ninety days if we're looking at from, moving them from temporary to permanent. Um, but some of those don't want to be. Now, I know we had Jody on, um, Pantral on. Um, we have a couple other heavy, heavy duty...
He, he wanted to be temporary.
Yeah, because he's retired and he doesn't want permanent positions. Our, our permanent employees cost us at least fifty percent of what their, their salary or their hourly rate for, um, health insurance, you know, payrolls. Um, workers' comp, we're, we're self-insured for workers' comp, so...
No, we're not.
I'm sorry, you're right. No, we're not. We're partially self-insured for, for, uh, health insurance. She's right.
But we also hire...
We are self-insured for unemployment.
Through temporary service to actually, we run a lot of employees through that to start off, to make sure that they're a good fit for the pairs. If we hire somebody who says they're a truck driver, or says they're a grader operator, and it turns out they are not a truck driver, that we would consider a good truck driver for us, or it doesn't work out, it's easy for us to call Manpower and say, "We're no longer interested in Mr. Carey coming to work tomorrow."
He can't drive a grader.
We can sever our relationship. So we get to trial-run an employee for three months to make sure that they can run a dozer, or run a grader. And we've gotten in the past multiple good employees that Manpower will say, "Hey, I've got a grader operator. Do you have a need for him?"
So ninety days is the, the norm, is what you're saying?
And it depends. We can run them through there, or she can send them to us.
Uh...
But if they're in the temporary, if we're not, have a full-time position for them, we can keep them longer than ninety days on Manpower.
And my point was, and I misspoke, we are self-insured for unemployment.
Health insurance.
And, and health insurance. But unemployment being that if we hired Mr. Carey, and he worked for us for thirty days and said, "I don't like this", they can file unemployment against us, and we have to pay that. So we, that's another safeguarding of our assets because we don't have to worry about an unemployment claim.
Yeah, with the nerve of unemployment.
Yeah, and all that's theirs.
Yeah, but unemployment, it depends on what they left for.
Uh, no, not really. I have seen people being fired and still, for a real, I mean, not just, I'm talking about for an egregious act, and still get unemployment.
Many.
You, 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 yeah, you can't, you, you, everybody thinks that if Julie gets fired for some horrible act, that she can't file unemployment. That's not true.
Well, I know they go through a claims process.
Oh, it's a claims, but it's just like your insurance.
Yeah.
They don't care.
Okay.
Sign them up.
What else you got?
What?
What else you got?
I got all of these.
All right, let's get with it.
Small tool, why, what changed for us to go from using nothing to forty thousand dollars needed for small tool?
Because in the past, we did not keep impact guns on a grader. We did not keep normal, everyday tools that a person would need on equipment.
For on-site maintenance.
For on, for our graders, for our, yes. So they have their own tools that they keep on the grader, they keep on the dozer, whatever species of equipment. So we, we've started correcting that and having tools available for the highway department to do their own minor repairs, as they do. That's why.
We have a process in place to make sure they don't walk off?
Mr. Sauter, would you like to tell us?
Yes, we have two boxes now, been painted and color-coded for the shop, for the work trucks. And there, there's lock boxes there. And there's a guy that, he kinda watches over all that. The main one that uses them. And everything goes back in the same place. So, I mean, you can call out there anytime and say, "Hey, where's that impact?" Robert knows where his impact is, but he's kinda assigned to that impact. And he don't wanna lose it.
They took, um, how much green paint? Is it green? Okay, everything green? Everything that was new purchased is now bright green?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Or you could get the engraver engraved it though.
Yeah, but, um, it painted bright green, and then everything green stays in the shop. You know, so we're starting to do a lot of in-house maintenance.
Solid waste. Under trash contract, it went up?
It did. Um, I think I used a three percent, five percent. Um, we have had two CPI, um, increases this year. Um, we're, we're scheduled to have more. Um, but as you know, that contract's gonna expire in June. So until we figure out what that's gonna look like, yes, I budgeted additional trash contract. Trash contract, please.
Easy for you to say.
Not so much. Don't make me say digitize, that hurts.
On, on the back page, uh, for solid waste under equipment fixed access.
Access.
Yeah, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Down at the bottom, you have trucks and equipment, one for one-fifty, another for two-hundred. Is that the same number?
One-fifty plus two-hundred is three-fifty, yes, it's a total of three-fifty.
Pardon?
It's one-fifty plus the two-hundred for a total of three-fifty. If you look up on...
Is that the same three-fifty that's up in, uh...
Yes, yes, sir, that is the same.
And what are we looking to purchase?
Well, um, there's a couple things. Um, what's that thing called? The bucket truck. And one of the things we're gonna talk about later is we have to purchase a dozer. The dozer that we purchased in twenty-twenty-one, um, is no longer working. And we're gonna ask the council to surplus it, and we have to get a new dozer. So, um, that, that is...
You put another limb truck in?
That's what I'm, I'm on truck.
That's what it means, yeah.
Yeah, I knew what she was trying to say. Grab the limb truck.
All right.
Uh, back on the, uh...
I understand.
Mr. Sauter, did you have any, uh, contact with Red River on the chip and seal equipment yet?
No, we hadn't been up there yet. Go ahead. I have not personally.
Okay.
He's always pretty much worked out a deal.
The Polish chairman that I was been talking to, he's been out of town on vacation.
Okay.
He just got back this week, and I have not talked to him this week, but I have talked to him in the past.
Okay. Are we still looking at this?
Oh, yeah, we should've talked to him again when he's here.
I know we project for a MOMAX to, is it, I think we and Mr. Sauter's talking about that Sunday. I think we had, we spoke about, is it still something y'all want, or are you looking at? Or is it still...
Didn't you have a demonstration or something?
We had a demonstration, Mr. Carey came and went over it. You can use the machine for several different things, uh, me personally, I didn't know it had all the attachments going in the front, like he explained to me, Mr. Carey. We really wouldn't need that. We just need to cut the limbs back where we can get to the ditches, to open the ditches up, air the roads out. We have quite a few people call it every day, low lang, low hanging limbs. We had sent up some guys out to brickyard roads to cut limbs with pole saws where they could get back. We had a MOMAX, we could open the roads back up.
Yeah, he says he could do up to four inches. He did say, three halves probably where you wanna let it, but he could do four.
It's due up to four inches, but, uh, it has a, what, twenty-six foot boom? Is that?
Yeah, and he has...
Twenty-six foot boom.
Particulating arm that can go just...
Yeah, and, uh, the head will rotate, you know, anyway. The machine, you can level the machine, like you get off in the ditch or something, you can self-level the machine.
Yeah, that's pretty good, but, uh...
It, uh, it crabs, it has four-wheel, um, steering, it's four-wheel drive. Uh, what do you say, it travels twenty-eight, something like twenty-eight miles an hour for mobile.
Hey, there's some floatability, what you were talking, you were talking about on, on the, it's moving, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and if, and then, uh, it don't, if, you know, it's matched one paddle before and one go back. It's no gear shifters, be shifting and all that, no clutches. Uh, you just... All around the machine, it's a nice machine. Uh, I've been got two, that was a CD, I think, that bought that one.
You want mine?
Okay, so there. I, I'm just looking at the chip and seal quickly, and I'm hoping that they donate that to us, that saves us a lot of money.
Yeah, uh, I gotta get with the Polish chairman again.
Okay.
Uh, he was out of town on vacation, he got back.
Let, let me ask you about that chip seal also. Was that, was that everything you would need to run, to put chip seal on roads?
Yeah, mostly, it's a distributor truck and a truck that puts the tar out. And Marty was out at the landfill the other day, and he saw it. But that tank that you saw, Marty, is not for chip seal, that was for a patch truck.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that quantity there wouldn't do a forty mile. But you, you go get your, your tar from another source.
Right.
But the truck that they've got is one we need, the distributor.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, if you figure it on three miles, and they're gonna bring a big tanker down here and park it, you just go fill up the back pool.
It'll be heated.
So that, that actually that could, okay.
Yeah, it'll be heated.
But I didn't want to let that get away, and you think that that was for, that was for a patch truck.
I was thinking that was part of the chip seal process, that tank out there.
Same canionics, but it's just different volume.
It's gonna have enough volume, that's right.
That'd work. Appreciate that. Okay.
But I would love to get back into a patch truck before it's overwheeled and have one man instead of three-man crew, and have something that will be heated and put in place that stay there.
Yeah.
And I have tried to buy it, and they won't even talk to me about selling one. They wanted to sell me a trailer to take three people. And I said, "Oh, I want a truck that one man can run," so they never get called back, so I put food with them. We doing some more stuff out there right now, uh, is this the money for the truck? Uh, Julie, she's always messing around getting grants, you know, and this is forty-eight thousand. We're renting the trucks with a trailer. It's costing three thousand a month, four thousand, for eight-piece or both.
Twenty-seven for the truck, I believe, and nine for the trailer.
So, we've made a deal to take this money and add, uh, they won't, they told us we could have that truck that's pulling that trailer. It's got the less miles, less maintenance, for any problem, for fifty-five thousand.
Yeah.
If we bring the trailer to them, if they come back the trailer up, they're gonna charge us fifty-six thousand. So we'll have a truck that we own, and, uh, won't be paying rent on it anymore. And we took the truck that we pulled our old trailer with, and we made a truck to pull the zipper out of it. The deal fell out with our water tank truck, so we had to get a tank made, nine thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And that's gonna be four to six weeks. We're sitting there waiting on that. But this truck that we're letting, we're going to purchase, we're taking, we got a trailer of it. The parts to fix the trailer that we got was seventeen hundred dollars, and the part that needs fixing, we can buy a new one for twenty-two, so... We're gonna have a trailer truck paid for, we're not gonna be paying rent on it. If we need to pull a low wall, we're gonna pull it for that. We, we doing a little smooching around, and like I said, thanks to Julie, there's a lot of stuff happening around here that ordinarily wouldn't. People are giving us money, as you know, where to get it.
Right. Okay.
We couldn't afford to skip there because it wouldn't, it wouldn't do what we needed to do.
Right.
He had to rent a dozer for thirty days because of what we fixing to do with this other purchase that we need to do. I'll go ahead and talk about that while we into it, uh, they, they let the, they let the ram get men on the front of our dozer. And the ram was hitting out, and it was going down the side of the tube, and it got a bunch of shavings. The whole system in the dozer is gone. They can fix it, the caterpillar for twenty-one thousand, but they can't guarantee it. So, we, we, we bought that dozer three years ago.
Twenty-one, the end of twenty-one.
Yeah, it belongs to the parish. So now, we've gotta turn around, the, the quote we got on the same dozer is a hundred and ninety-six thousand. So if we give them twenty-one thousand, and they put it on this dozer, if they can't guarantee, they will give us fifty thousand dollars before they do anything to it, trade-in. Help put us putting a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand on a new dozer. So we got to help the dozer we rented, what, how much better more?
Uh, it may have to be a...
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand more. But now, it's a big dozer called the Behind in Olympia.
Right.
So I went ahead and got the bigger machine to do more work in less time.
I guess it's seven, D-seven, D-eight?
That's a seven-hundred, which equals to about a six or seven, that's a John, yes. But I just went ahead and got the, the bigger one to knock it out before it come in, you know, we were behind in Olympia.
Yeah, yeah, definitely was behind.
The D-three that you're talking about, you wanna get rid of, is that the one that, uh, is for the...
Olympia.
Olympia?
Yes, sir.
And the recommendation is a smallish, uh, dozer for that type of activity is a, a D-six. Okay. The caterpillar's saying?
No, I mean, that's not what I was told.
Well, once he called up, he, I mean, you don't need that big old dozer back there, 'cause you only pushing what, uh, pure gold.
But the caterpillar people are saying that we're not smart.
Who's the, the ones we had there the other day?
I heard you talk to them.
But he's seeing where we're behind. He don't, he didn't see where...
We, we didn't talk about that.
Cause most of the thing they're pushing is a limb every once in a while, a tree that comes in.
Well, they're basically saying that D-three is too small for that application. And all you're doing is wasting your time because, just like in twenty-twenty-one, we bought one. It was not misused, and we bent the crap out of something.
How you know it wasn't misused? How you know that?
Well, it, it, I don't know, but...
No, maybe, but I don't know if they said.
Have you looked at the dozer? I mean, it's been up from one end to the other end. I mean, I got...
I'm just looking at information I received from the, from the, from caterpillar folks.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I'm going by.
Yeah.
And some other research that we, that we have done. Three of us was out there, they gave us some information, we received some more information. And it's to the point where you continue to, uh, buy something that's too small for the application. And a D-three said it's too small for the application. I'm not the expert, I'm sure you all have some experience as well, but if the manufacturer is telling you one thing, okay, to try to help you from continuing to come up with...
But you're gonna double the price of the machine, too.
And was the guy out there whenever we have a dozer for five months?
We're just losing a hundred and forty-five thousand right now, or so. If you're saying a new one's costing one, one ninety-five, I think?
One ninety-six.
One ninety-six, they wanna give us fifty thousand for?
That's for a three.
That, that, that's for a three, so you haven't, you haven't had it three years yet, you haven't had it two years, okay? So round it off at seventy-five thousand dollars a year, you just threw out the window. Okay, because you bought something that's too small.
So when was the guy out, out there to look, because we haven't had a dozer for two and a half months, that's why we're.
That was a skid steer.
Oh, it was a skid steer.
That was the skid steer, they said the skid steer won't do what we want to do, but they haven't had a dozer for two and a half, almost three months. That's why they're talking about, he rented the large one to catch up and get us called up because.
Talking about buying now.
I, I understand, and, and that's what I'm saying, right now, the limpet is in the worst condition it's ever been in because we haven't had a dozer for three months. He rented the large dozer to get it cleaned up and done, and ready back to where it needs to be, to be presentable and to pass. But in our contract with the DEQ, they approved the D three because they agree that's all we need to keep it where it needs to be, and generally, the dozer isn't used every day. But if the, if the person from John Deere or whatever says a D three's too small today, is it because of the condition they saw the limpet in today? If they saw it when it's been maintained on a regular basis, would they say a D three is too small? When the DEQ agrees that a D three is what we need, and that's what's approved? Matter of fact, in the contract, I think it specifically goes all the way down to the serial number of the dozer that we have, they say it's big enough. Maybe what we need to do is reevaluate our operator, which has ramshacked the dozer on multiple occasions, we've spent.
Who's operating?
We're in open, yeah, let's not talk about that. But we need to reevaluate the operation of the dozer and things that are done with it on our end to make sure that we take care of it, because if you've seen the dozer, it has been applied in positions it should not have been applied in, and that's why we're only getting fifty thousand for it, because they're gonna give us fifty, even though they know we can't fix it at the estimated twenty, they can't guarantee that it'll be usable again. So they're gambling on giving us even fifty for it, because it could be worth scrap iron metal money. Maybe, or it could be fixed and never have another problem, but that's also a gamble, and the first, that's twenty thousand, we've never put anything at the shop for twenty, and it came out at twenty, when it's something this massive. So it could come out at thirty, and it could not be completely fixed, and we'd have thirty more in it.
I mean, the six, across for a six thousand dollars.
We got a quote on state contract for larger dozers.
But the DEQ says a three big enough for the.
The DEQ says a D three is big enough for the, for the limpet that we have and the volume that we get.
Thank you.
Cause it, it has to be in our contract and application permit. Okay.
Are we through with the budget stuff?
Uh, I, I wanted to ask that, because now, this is by far and away, or I think, by far and away, the most important thing that's gonna come before this council.
What?
The budget.
Oh, yeah, I know.
All right, and, yeah. Everybody satisfied with, with what Julie has presented, any more questions?
I, I'm open, like I told you after we met, I, I will answer anything.
All right, I, I just wanted to be, be sure we, we've discussed that enough, okay? All right, thank you, Ms. Sheen.
Okay. C, Council, Council to adopt ordinance twenty, twenty twenty-four lease of transfer station that is to begin nine, three, twenty twenty-four, expiring six, thirty, twenty twenty-five. During this lease, all other terms and conditions contained in the lease sign, September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. I guess, do you see his voice connection?
Yes.
And October fourth, twenty nineteen, Nagus Parish Government will remain in force and effect unless canceled by the Parish of Nagus.
This an ordinance?
I, I have one that I need to send you, I, I wanted to make sure it was, I, I took my hand at trying to make it look like it's supposed to, and Mr. Ransor said it was sufficient, so I can send you that to upload to the, uh, the exhibits.
Okay.
Yeah, we need that, yeah.
Okay, I'll send it to him, what you give to me, I'll send it to the council.
Okay.
And I'll probably have a, updated my financial report since, uh.
Okay. That was just the.
I made a mistake.
Adjudicated problems.
Yeah.
Okay, next, Council to adopt ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-four to remove from the Nagus Parish road system the east and, east end portion of Cypress Lane that ends at Highway four eighty-four in Nagus, Louisiana. And will abandon its maintenance of this section of the road. This section of the road has no residence and consists of farmland. All voting landowners are in agreement with the removal of this portion of the road from the parish road system. Any questions about that?
That's in Mr. Allen's district. That's in your district.
Okay, E, Council adopt ordinance twenty-two, a budget amendment for the general fund and the sales tax fund. Any questions on that? F, G, H, and I is ordinances for the Economic Development District for one, two, three, and four. And I'm not gonna read action, because it's the same thing as on the public hearing.
What did all of those economic districts approve before?
Yeah, but they had to, but they had to be amended to exclude the pre-existing businesses. Okay, so they.
You was out that, you was out of town.
Coming up, and I didn't, not why I would do that.
When we had to do that, that's the meeting that you was out of.
Oh, okay.
Right, and, and that was, was done?
What?
The map showed it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, map showed.
And it has little squatches in it, and.
The other carve-outs.
Yeah, little, little white spots.
Yeah, we did, right?
Who, who, who did it?
Us.
Us? I ain't changed that map.
Okay.
You didn't change it, you approved the move.
No, it's a firm did it, so tell us, what was the map puzzle?
So, um, Butler Snow, Mike Vasada changed the maps. What, what I think Mr. Hall is getting at, it took a lot to get those maps to our actual website for use. Um, so we, we have now identified David Alfred who can do that, so we do. If Butler Snow's shape files will not upload like they did in the last time, we have somebody that can fix it. That's what you wanted to know, right? If, if Laura's maps will reflect those changes.
All right, cause I talked to Laura today, and her maps did not reflect those changes.
And they won't until, once this is approved, then we'll, we'll get her maps. I, I tell her, I said, I, I promise you.
You promise.
Yeah, I promise, it won't take as long as it did the first time, I promise.
Okay.
Okay. On the resolutions, Council adopt resolution thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four to apply and participate in the State of Louisiana Twenty Twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Program that establishes procedures to ensure adequate citizen participation with the program. And Julie, you can, um, know about A and B.
Okay, um, y'all have any question about the, um, LG, LCDBG, um, pieces?
This is a standard thing that all the parishes are doing.
It, it is, um, as I told y'all when this started, I have never done a LCDBG. Um, so you cross that with, they're changing a lot of the program addicts, so they're requiring us to, we're like, within that crossover year, so we're having to adopt to update these procedures and policies as we go. Even though y'all have already approved them one time, but they have changed them. It's out of my control, can't do anything about it, I promise. All right, what's my, which eight, A and B? Okay, our landfill, our, our DEQ permit is up for renewal.
That's for B?
No, no.
No, 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 no.
That was seven, she jumped there.
Resolution.
Resolutions.
Oh, C. Resolution B, okay.
Resolution B.
I was trying to move, I was trying to jump.
That's the same thing, right?
Okay, A and B is the LCDBG.
Right, that's all.
C is for Gold on a Road, um.
I ain't got that one yet.
Where am I? Okay, you should, you should still be on A and B.
We on A and B.
Okay. So, those are two things, this, it's two procedures that the state is, is making us do. So both of those, I, I thought I addressed, both of those are the same function. Those are, those are two things that has been pushed down to us from the Office of Community Development that we have to do to be in ones.
Okay.
C, C is the Gold on a Road project. Um, that's where, we, we did it for the courthouse security, where I signed the request for payments, Mr. Salter signs everything else. He resigns the contracts and all that. So that's what you have to, the council has to say who's gonna sign what, so that is that resolution, okay? Um, H, A, the landfill permit is expiring in March of twenty-five. Sorry, I'm just, sorry, I'm overstepping my bounds, I'm sorry.
Any question about C? Okay, now, on the other Jim Adams, Julie.
Okay, so our solid waste permit is expiring in March of twenty twenty-five. Um, so that has to be done. Um, we, this, Fournay and Deveraux Engineers does ninety percent of all the landfills in the state. They do all the parishes that have landfills. Um, so we want to contract with them to handle that. Um, they also brought to our attention that, Mr. Salter, help me.
Buffer zone?
Five years, that they, they project in five years we'll have to expand.
Yeah.
And we have area to expand, but they are, uh, suggesting that we go ahead and start the process of permitting the expansion. So, what we're asking is to sign an agreement, says that they will take care of our current permit, and they will also work to get our modification to have a bigger area for our landfill footprint, yeah.
All right.
One of the things in their, uh, packet says F A D, FDAE and the parish should meet with LDEQ to discuss the proposed expansion, the capacity evaluation, the existing geotechnical investments, and propose, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, when do we do that?
As soon as they get, they were trying to figure, they, they gonna get some numbers together for DEQ to go over and look, and then we'll meet with them, and they say it's a work.
So that's, that's done?
The, the immediate need is to get our, our permit ready for renewal in twenty-five.
Okay.
And then, this other piece, it, it's not, um, as time sensitive, I guess. Like I said, it, they project that the current facility as it's permitted would work for another five years. Um, we're just taking steps to start getting it permitted, so it'll be done.
Okay. Council to choose and award a building official permanent entity for Nagus Parish beginning December first, twenty twenty-four, and running through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So did you, you supplied all the, the documents, no, for, yeah, so everybody got to take a look.
I saw.
Yeah. Um, if you would like to speak on your behalf, or discuss any more, cause we're gonna have to, we had an extension, and the extension's expiring, so we're gonna have to choose, okay? And we're gonna have to vote, okay? Um, and there's, but now, there's only two, that's the current one we have, and then the Rapids Parish. Yeah.
So we'll be voting on that. It's not actually Rapids Parish, by the way, it's Rapids Area Planning Commission.
That's exactly right, we're not in a, with Rapids Parish. But that's, that's Carrie's shortened language, you know, it's Rapids Area Planning Commission, represented here by Matt Johnson.
I used to be their lawyer, so I know.
Oh, so you gotta get it correct, yeah.
I know what that.
So, so that's all it is, we're gonna vote on who we're going to do, and the contract goes, will go for how long?
You had said from December the first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so then at the end, uh, basically at the end of our terms, it'll have to be voted again to renew. Any, any questions about cost, fees, work? We're here to answer, Matt Johnson's right here.
Super short, thank you for your consideration.
This man has sit through all that just to say that.
Learned a lot.
Any, okay, so I guess we're good on that.
You're gonna get your.
Oh.
Next, Council to discuss the procedure for planning its own ordinances, Mr. Ransor?
At current, the, when someone applies for a permit or a variance through the Planning Commission, it goes before the Planning Commission as an introduction. Um, and then, uh, after it's introduced and acted upon favorably by the Planning Commission, it then sits over for another thirty days, uh, notification goes out to adjoining landowners. Um, Malonia, do they have the hearing at the introduction, or the, the hearing's at the second, right? So at the second meeting, they have a hearing, and then the Planning Commission acts on it. If they approve it, then it comes to the council for approval. The, the, the problem is that it comes to the council for introduction, and then it sits over for another thirty days. So you're talking about somebody getting a permit and variance that takes four months to go through that process. And through discussions with a number of people that Julie and, I think Malonia and Mr. Mintern, who is the chairman of the Planning Commission, I thought, what, why, why don't we shorten that by having it introduced at the Planning Commission? And between the time of the, because of our meetings, the parish council meetings, and the Planning Commissions allow it. If the Planning Commission meets this week and introduces it, and they vote favorably on it, while that thirty-day period is waiting, why don't we go ahead and have it introduced by the council just as an introduction? And then, at the next Planning Commission meeting, uh, if for some reason they don't approve it, then the council doesn't act on it.
Exactly.
But if, if they do approve it, then the council can then approve it in pretty short order, because I think their meetings are within about a week of the council meetings, one or two weeks. But it would limit the delay in people trying to get started on their projects. And that was a suggestion that I was gonna make to the council. Um, I, I don't know that you really have to, uh, you, you don't have to do an ordinance. I think if y'all are okay with that, uh, way, and Malonia's here to have her.
It's on the home room charter, is, uh, for them to go through the council as ordinances.
Right, and it would still be an ordinance.
It would still be an ordinance, I'm simply saying, I, I see no reason that delay and when the council introduces it, and while it's sitting over for that, that thirty-day, I mean, the Planning Commission, after they introduce it, while it's waiting on them to do final approval, let the council go ahead and introduce it. after they introduce it, while it's waiting on them to do final approval, let the council go ahead and introduce it. And then if for some reason the Planning Commission doesn't approve it or they have a public, uh, hearing and someone objects and the Planning Commission doesn't want to do it, then the council can simply not put it on their agenda for approval. Make sense?
Yeah, so what would be required to do this?
I don't know anything other than to to let the Planning Commission know uh, that after a permit goes through the introduction process.
Zone and change.
To provide, I'm sorry.
Zone and change.
Zoning change.
Cheryl's looking all confused, a zoning change, Cheryl, you're talking about zoning changes.
Whatever, yeah.
Variance or whatever.
Yeah.
That planning gives it to you and you simply put it on the agenda as an introduction of an ordinance, for an ordinance.
Yeah, I I think, I think the process is long and drawn out, in fact, I spoke to Mr. Minter about it and you did too.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we're we're very aware. I don't have any, yeah, I don't have a second.
Oh, he's Mr. Minter and I, oh.
Yeah, all right, so we're good, we're sympathetic, yes.
Just didn't have any direction on which way we should do it. And I was looking for him to make that happen and he said he would, so it's it's back to us.
Yeah, I I I just wanted to, everybody be on the same page and if anybody had a problem with it or didn't want to do it that way, then we won't do it that way. But if it's okay, it it's just a matter of them notifying you that it's gone through the introduction at planning, please put it on the agenda for introduction before the council. That's it.
Right, just everything else is the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything else.
It's just.
Yeah, but good.
Compressed.
I don't have a problem with it, um, I was just saying, um, I know it was in the whole charter because I always question, because Malona's my, um, she know what I'm talking about, is that I always question why it comes to the council anyway, why it just can't stay with the, uh, planning and zoning. And that's when they told me that it's in the home room charter, which I went back and looked, that it is, there had to be an ordinance to go through the council. But I'm not, you know, it usually wasn't that way, it just started in twenty nineteen.
I think the reason that 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 it's properly in the home room charter that way is just to make sure that i- if there's some some objection by the council, that they look at it too. I mean, otherwise.
Normally, we didn't get anything, and Mr. Salter, you you the oldest one that was on the council. Usually, we didn't never have anything to come to the council with planning and zoning with anything. Only time we had something to come through, uh, planning and zoning, if the people appealed it and wasn't satisfied with the planning and zoning, then they brought it to us and then that's when the council always say, well, if the planning and zoning people say this, they always went with the planning and zoning commission. Because we never did, I'm I'm just saying, we never had to deal with it until like in twenty nineteen.
Well, that's when I started, maybe I was the one that did it, but under section two dash.
Oh, I know it's in the whole charter, but I mean.
Two dash ten, A sixteen, says an act of the council having the force of law shall be by ordinance. An act requiring an ordinance shall include, sixteen is, adopt or modify the zoning plan, maps, and regulations.
Yeah, I'm I'm just saying, um.
Yeah, it wasn't done before.
It wasn't done before.
So Malona says she has one that was just introduced this month, so if y'all, if they're willing to do that, they could actually move that zoning change up to be on the agenda and hit two months, be introduced and hit two months instead of four.
Yeah, because that's the key, is to rapidly get it to us right after.
The one she got on here now?
No, she's got one besides that. That was just introduced at this meeting, not one that's.
Because they're on the first Monday.
But one that was introduced at her meeting earlier this month.
That's fine.
Yeah, if she can get it to her today, then it could be put on the agenda for Monday.
For me personally, I'm fine, I just don't want to do anything without written verification because I'm going to have people to say, where is it written that I'm that we're doing this? So if you're going to, if we're going to do this, I would like something written saying that we're going to do the intro and the two intros in the same month and then the two focus in the next.
Do what now?
So we're speeding it up, they're going to object to us speeding it up.
She just wants something for her benefit.
For her benefit.
Just in case someone asks me, why are we doing it, why, what was changed, why, why am I making this change? I want, I would like something in writing.
Approved through our legal department and the parish council.
It would be nice, okay, to 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 do it, but you have one item. It's big of a change, isn't it much so? I don't, I, we 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 want to do that. If we have enough time and she has enough time to do that, have what she needs, fine, if not, it just goes into the regular procedure. But at least we can publicize the fact that we're looking at being a a a means to be able to reduce that by thirty days, that time period.
So you don't want her, but you don't want to actually reduce by sixty days?
I I said, if she doesn't have time.
Oh, okay, but it just takes you to give it.
That's all I said.
I don't have a problem, I can do it, I just want it.
That's between you and her. I just made a statement.
But I'm not putting in a writing for her.
I didn't say you.
I said, between you two, don't y'all start.
Okay.
All right.
All right, next, um, council to surplus solid waste dozer twenty twenty one.
We talked about all that, didn't we?
I still had to read.
Anybody have any questions, any concerns? I'm doing sure it's dropping in.
You need it to be surplus so that we can trade it in and buy another dozer. If you don't surplus it, you can't trade it in.
That's what I said, I'm doing sure.
I moved it with Charlie.
Uh, no, not yet. This right here, is this supposed to go on the agenda?
No, I was just, that was for our, our, um, our grant stuff. That's just showing y'all that we did receive that grant this month and that's our our, uh, contract to sign and get back to them, so they'll give us forty eight thousand two fifty, I think it is. Oh, seven fifty.
So the only thing that I'm really changing on this works, um, session thing is B is taken out amended and just leave the period at account. That's the only thing that is changing. Right?
I'm sorry, I I was thinking.
She's amending that one item.
Everything is good on the agenda set for me to take out on B with the budget.
And you're going to add this addition.
Yeah, they amend.
But other agenda items, it needs to say who on the agenda, doesn't it need to say select or approve whoever is going to be selected? That decision shouldn't be left open for the.
For which one?
Agenda, right, uh, other agenda items, B. Shouldn't it say council to approve whatever? It shouldn't say to choose, the agenda item's supposed to be specific, right?
I don't know, what is it?
I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, tell me, if it's supposed to say we're going to choose Rapids Area Planning Commission or it shouldn't say we're going to choose, we'll choose Rapids Area Planning Commission?
Or approve, right, it shouldn't say select and choose, it should name.
And so be it.
So when it goes out to the public.
We put Rapids Area Planning Commission. I mean, I I just thought if you're choosing, you're choosing, but.
I I don't know, do you select it and put it on there or do you vote on it at the meeting? I I don't know. I mean, you're already suing that they're going to, how they're going to vote.
Well, it on the work session, it said to choose. From the discussion, it sounded like the choice has been made, so that's why I'm asking. Nobody else even said anything about I B T S, so it sounds like the choice has been made.
Oh, yeah, but.
Well, you know, we have not voted and, you know, uh, so we don't want to, we don't want to start giving that impression as far as just meetings are concerned. We're discussing the items, we put them on the agenda and then we vote.
Just like the board appointment, shouldn't it say approve whoever on the board, not choose and select in the meeting?
I was told how to, you know.
I'm just asking, I was just asking, because whenever they approve.
I was told that the council had to choose those people.
And I thought the choice was to be made in the work.
I just, they wanted to get involved. I only know one of those people and they're experienced and he's the only one to call me and then I had some more people call me in his favor. The other two, I know one of them when I see him, but I don't know anything about him and the other one I've never heard of.
And I already spoke about John Morgan, how he good, he's good, yeah.
But this is not Morgan.
Oh, not Morgan, you spoke about the three, yeah, the three. All right.
And I just said, well, maybe some of y'all know these people and they've contacted you.
I haven't heard of them.
Oh, I see. I know one. I don't know, I've served on the board with him before.
So, whatever, it don't matter.
It go on the agenda if, and and, uh.
I want to make sure because I don't want Wendy come saying what Cheryl saying what, so I need to put uh, I B T S and Rapids Area Planning on the, uh.
Well, if we're choosing, because we already.
Look, if you want to say choose between I B T S and R A B C, then you can do that.
Do that, that's, I'll do that.
That way you notify the public that those are the two people that you're going to choose. This is that trail ride ordinance. If you want to give that to Cheryl, then you let her make sure he's in there.
This man set a record.
Don't put that up there, it's not a goal.
Between me two.
We're just trying to wear you down.
Gosh. I bet you got a good lead today.
So we done?
No, we haven't adjourned yet. Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Motion to adjourn?
I move. And I say it.
Need adjourned?